All right. I need the agenda hanging here.
I can throw it to you, Dorothy, for the record, we have council member Martini, council member David, council member Rose, and council member Williams, and council member David. They have David, David, Rose, Williams, and Martini just joined. And we're in six oh two. Let me go ahead and pour.
Okay, okay, I call this workshop to order at six oh two P M. And can everybody stand a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a quick invocation. Dear Lord, please bless all those residents and first responders. For, please bless all that can join us. Give us guidance to make good decisions, even tough ones. Please. Bless those that we've lost lately. Amen.
You ready? We didn't have any public sign up for the meeting tonight. Okay. So we do have two public comments that were submitted, but I believe it's for the Oakdale conversation. But at this time, we want to defer to the Oakdale situation and or take public comment at this time. We can do so, and the limitation would be three minutes.
Do we have any hands up? I can't see any of that chat. I think.
Let's do this. I do see one hand up and it's Brandy Haynes. Brandy, would you like to defer or speak now?
Yeah, I'd like to defer, and I think people might have forgotten that at this kind of venue, we, it's not like the Oakdale traffic workshops and that, so just, I don't, I don't think a lot of people knew to sign up, just to FYI.
No problem. Well, if it's at the council's direction, we can open up for public comment prior to the Oakdale issue, because I know a lot of people on for that, not the budget presentation. So council member Williams, would you like me to proceed with the budget analysis report?
Yeah, let's go ahead and proceed with it. That way Jim have time to catch up and get on for the other half.
All right, well, mayor and council, as you know, mayor pro town and council, as you know, every six months into the new fiscal year, I always do a mid-year report, so we know where we are, where we're going, if we need to hold back on some projects, or if we need to make some cuts. Thankfully, each and every year, we're not in a position where we have to make cuts. I have been in that situation before when I was previously at the city of Wildwood. And that's when the bubble burst and we had a, you know, based on the projections from the previous city manager, how to make significant cuts and upwards of $2 million out of a thinking[247.89][247.89]$19 million budget. Thankfully, we're not in the same situation. But again, this is a preview of where we, where we are today, what we're going to be looking for at the end of the fiscal year, and then some of the projects that we're working on for next fiscal year. And when I say fiscal, everybody thinks, you know, the calendar year, and it's completely different. Our fiscal year begins October 1st and it ends September 30th. So again, it's a different window of, to take a look at than what you would typically see as a budget year. As just some house cleaning items, I would ask that you mute until either the council opens it up for public comment and or when the council closes public comment, I'm going to go ahead and stop the chat and they can ask the public if there's any additional comments, but tonight is for them to discuss some of the issues that we're raising tonight. But right now, again, it's the town of Winnebago budget analysis report. So first thing we always do is we take a look at revenues. And based on the projected revenues, typically we utilize department revenue numbers and or what we do is, since I've been here in 2011, I've created our own spreadsheets. A lot of times you see financial directors, town managers, city managers, they would just increase all the revenues per CPI, or they're trying to do, you know, some sort of crystal ball projection of what you're going to be receiving for the next fiscal year. What we typically do is when we look at the past in order to predict the future, and we try to do conservative estimates of revenues, so we're never in that situation to where you're six months in and you have to make several cuts, or you're having to dip into your reserves significantly because of what's going on, because there's always unpredictables, you know, you know, we couldn't have projected that we were going to see, you know, construction prices going up, inflation, so on and so forth. So again, we try to be as conservative as possible when it comes to revenues and expenditures. And typically, when I sit down with some of the directors and the budget liaison, we ask for what they need, not what they want. And then once we get through all the needs, then we start talking about the wants, whether it's additional staffing, additional projects, and or maybe some equipment that they would need in the future. So based on the revenues, move some things around here, we're taking hits in some areas, and we've gained in some areas. When you look at the global option gas tax, you know, the price is going up, you do get a certain percentage of that, but that's a little bit increased to 3,600 over what was originally anticipated. Communication service tax, you know, in years past, you typically see that doing a little bit of a roller coaster, and that was when you had bundling, you had people fighting over getting new customers now that you have streaming services and other types of communications that are out there, we are seeing an increase in communication service tax. Now, this is an unguaranteed tax that we're going to hope, hopefully is a guaranteed tax that we see in perpetuity, but this is one that the communication companies typically go after as far as making sure that, you know, to try either eliminate it or to reduce it. And Dorothy, for the record, the mayor is joining at this time. So we're going to see an increase in communication service taxes with building permitting fees. We haven't seen an increase like we did in the last couple of years, even though our last report that I received, and this is the type of report that we receive, you know, it's volumes, and that's just one department. And what we do is, you know, with building services, I looked at the first six months which went through March, and I just received the April numbers, and there was $45,000 worth of revenues in that line item. So these are all based on March 31st numbers, which will equate for the first six months. So we have seen an uptick, uptick in the building permits, but we typically don't see a lot, and we only receive 80% or actually 20% of that as revenue. So the loss that we're going to see is only around $7,000, because 80% of that goes towards PDCS on paying for their services. So the revenue that we get is pretty much an admin fee to make sure we're processing things and making sure that everything's running smoothly. Planning, review, and surcharges, you typically see that at the end of projects. Again, we're seeing a little bit of a reduction in that franchise fee for due, again, because they have increased some of the costs, we're going to see an increase in that. The Firdapp funding, which will all get to the very end, that was a audit adjustment that was done at the end of the fiscal year, because we did receive it this fiscal year. And I can go through each and every one of these, but basically, at the end of the day, we're looking at receiving $6,778,359, which is about $91,427 more than what we originally budgeted. And you can see a majority of that is from the ARPA funding, which is the American Recovery Act dollars we submitted for the water designs up to this point for older main Bessie Butler and West Second Avenue, as well as the premium pay for employees and lost revenues. So building permitting fees, as I said before, is a split between 80 and 20, or 80 20 splits, the actual losses outside of about 100 zoning deposits, they always get reconciled at the end of the year. So we always make sure that we have development paid for itself. So typically, when you look to develop something in the town of Winnebago or do some project in the town of Winnebago, you have to pay a zoning deposit, and any money that is over that deposit, you have to pay in addition to your, or else you're not going to get a CO. If it's underneath that, then we give you a refund of that money. Again, the Firdapp funds, which is the Florida Recreational Assistance Program, we utilized money in Central Park, and that was reimbursed to us this fiscal year, which we didn't anticipate. Winnebago Wine and Dine, that had a limited capacity, so we based it on what if they had a full event, and again, this year they didn't have a full event, it was full, but it was, you know, it wasn't as big as they typically have it, so it didn't generate the same amount of money, even though it was successful. And you always see it's money in, money out for the wine and dine. The reason for that is because we put it into the reserve for them to use for future projects and or to fund the future events, which they are planning to do one sometime in the fall. Rent, again, you saw the dip in rent, that is not only a cause of, you know, COVID and people not utilizing town facilities as much, but there's also some of the lost revenue that we saw from, you know, other renters that we saw in the old facilities. So we'll be adjusting that quarterly in the future. The committee and boards, when you see coding issues, the reason that we have coding issues from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, we did lose our finance clerk at the end of the fiscal year, probably the worst time that you can actually have it, because we're in the middle of doing budget reconciliations, we're having to deal with the auditors, and then Nora is inundated with all this information, and then she's having to make sure that everything's coding correctly to the right departments. So, you know, when we hired Tara, when we hired Teresa, we're trying to cross train everybody in the middle of this, and the same thing with Tony, when she joined us, is trying to figure out, okay, well, how do you code things, what should be coded to? So after this fiscal year, you know, we're making sure that everything is, everybody's understanding where things should be coded. So if you have a stormwater project, it's being coded to stormwater. If you have something that is a miscellaneous expense within your budget, it's being coded as a miscellaneous expense. And that gives us a way to tell, okay, when I take a look at all of these different line items, what's an anomaly that I can not worry about for next fiscal year? Because just because you spent $40,000 this year doesn't mean you're going to spend $40,000 next year. So that's where the whole quoting issue occurred, and I think she's already reconciled that for this fiscal year up to this point. And then future, these revenues don't really account for any additional revenues that we may receive. The ones in sales tax, we wouldn't receive those next fiscal year anyway, so I'm not sure why I even included that. But there are also some other revenue sources that we're trying to acquire, which is, you know, healthy West Orange. And again, we're trying to get some additional monies from the federal and state governments. We actually met with Congressman Webster today. So any questions on revenues? Again, you know, we're still dealing with the pandemic, but we typically, again, use our past to predict the future, and I believe that we're going to be in a good position from a revenue standpoint at the end of the fiscal year. So you know, questions from council, I'll move forward with expenditures. And again, this is broken down per department legislative, which is town council. Again, you can see that you're over budget slightly, and the slight, or well, it's actually showing that you're under budget, and the reason for that is that you have the expenditures for wine and dine were less than what we anticipated, which was $200,000. But again, if you saw the revenues, it matches the expenditures, so it's money in, money out going to their reserves. In addition to that, there was an overage in the employee appreciation. You guys budget $5,000 for that each and every year, anything that's over and above that, the Winnebago Police Department Foundation pays for that balance. So it's not like, you know, the employees were crazy and started spending money on a appreciation party. It's just the overage is, is, is covered by the foundation up to the certain amount. Again, the miscellaneous is a coding error, and that was for chatter buzz for the website cost, which is about $2,148 annually. Communications for you guys, it was just App River Global Relay, you know, cost, and everything from here on out is just going to be coded to either admin or finance. We switched vendors from computer business to iVenture, and it was an easier way to budget for that, because they did it per user. So if I have an issue either on my laptop, my cell phone, my desktop, or any type of IT machine that I'm using, they will fix it for a fixed amount each and every month. So it's about $204 a month per user, and before it was as needed, and you had up to a certain amount of hours, and we always exceeded those hours, and that's something that you can't budget for. So this way, it's a lot easier. I know what my costs are going to be. Yes, you're going to have some anomalies if a computer crashes or a hard drive needs to be replaced, but we can sometimes anticipate that and add that into the budget. So again, with legislative, you guys are going to be under budget, but again, most of that is due to not spending as much as you thought you were going to be for wine and dine, and hopefully next year, it'll be definitely a bigger and better event, even though it was a fantastic event. With administration, again, communications was a huge hit. Everything was pretty much on point. The salaries for full time, again, as we're over a little bit, but we have, we added a full-time lobby clerk. Before, we just had Diane, and then we had Lillian, and Lillian was only part-time. We saw that with all the requests that we're getting in from Diane. We needed a full-time person, so we can have somebody full-time at the front lobby, and that's when we hired Teresa. Miscellaneous, again, included $1,500 for the boathouse appraisal, also included $3,500 for the new app, which will move to communications. But some of these things are, again, the anomalies that you just don't look at and say, okay, well, you spent $40,000, so let's just bump it up a CPI, which is around, I think, 4% right now, to, you know, $4,000 or $44,000, whatever it is. But again, communications, it's, we had paid $14,000 for onboarding, which we'll not pay for next fiscal year, and then $250 a month for website hosting, and then so on and so forth. But again, legal fees, we're probably going to keep that under again. Remember, when I first started, I think we had a budget of about $250,000. Now we're around like $80,000 for our legal fees, or more in control of what's going on and how those monies are being spent. And then office supplies, again, you know, I want to be very transparent on, when people take a look at the budget, they, they want to see where the money's going. When you need to move to a new facility, of course, you have things here and there, it's where you're going to have to pay for they really didn't anticipate. Clerk's budget, they're going to be under by $13,000, and for encryption, which is our offsite storage and our shredding company, we were over budget. Again, that's because we're storing stuff that typically stored in the town facilities, we got to store offsite, because we didn't have the facilities to adequately hold them. Now that we do, it's been moved over, so we'll see that increase for next fiscal year. Greenwich software, I know I had some questions on this from some of the council members. It is the agenda software that we utilize, so you can just click the tabs and go to those, and possibly also do a word search. And again, computer maintenance, that's actually in the admin budget. For healthcare, again, this is what we split it out, the easiest way to see it is when you see it in clerk, because there's one employee in the clerk's office. But we spend right now about $9,600 a year per employee, and this is employee only. You only cover the employees, and that's it. Again, with our pool as it stands right now, and with the amount of employees that we have, we typically have to join other pools if we're attractive enough to those pools. But I'm anticipating right now, you know, our healthcare costs are going to go up, so I may be having to select a more cost-effective plan for next fiscal year, and I will be telling the employees that, you know, what you have right now is a great plan, but we're going to have to make some cuts, either your deductible is going to have to go up, your co-pays are going to have to go up, because the town can't continuously keep paying these higher rates, and we're making sure that we're on par with industry standard, because if not, then, again, you get questions from the public that you have these rich plans, you know, why don't I have that? Why should you have anything different? And we try to make sure that we're comparable with industry standards. The same thing with dental vision and life, accidental death and dismemberment. We haven't received any of the healthcare numbers, usually we don't get them until August, and that won't be until after the next budget cycle, but we'll probably reduce that maybe to 9,500 or 9,000, depending upon what we think we're going to be able to get for next fiscal year. Finance, this is Nora White, finance director, and Tara. So the audit services, that was over because we RFQ'd it, and we went with McDermott and Davis, and they held their rate at the $20,000 for the next three years. And what we had budgeted was, I think, 1818 five, and we're anticipating the possibility of doing a special audit to make sure that we're ARPA compliant. The Accufund system, that was adjusted because we did the ADP payroll system, so they had to adjust the Accufund system, which is our financial system, to include a connection to ADP. So we're not having to manually put everything in, it's, it's just going in automatically through the the, the program into Accufund, and we're able to adequately, you know, document who's getting paid, when they're getting paid, and so on and so forth. Spectrum, we're over budget, because we had to move to new facilities, we had a dual facilities, payments. Orange County Utilities, we're over budget again to the new facility. You might say, why weren't some of these costs already in the new facility construction? Those aren't construction costs, those are costs that are, you know, pretty much overlapping that we had to deal with. Credit card lease was increased too, because we're moving completely cashless, and people might say, why did you go cashless? It, it's another layer added on to auditing that you just, if you don't need to do it, then why do it? Yes, you will have to pay a fee, but it's a lot easier as far as accountability, and for any risk of, you know, impropriety, theft, fraud, or anything like that. So that's why we're pretty much a cash-free facility now. Again, overrun office applies, but that was again, for the move to a new facility. Development Services, we're going to be under by $45,000, and that is, again, reflective of the revenues that we anticipated for development services or building services. So the 8020 split, we only pay them 80% of what we receive, and we collect the other 20%. So the hit for us on revenue-wise is about $7,500. For professional services, planning and zoning, again, whenever we call Brad, of course, he doesn't work for free, typically when there's a project, and it's project-specific, you know, with those, he has a, a, a tag on it to where somebody calls about, you know, say 614 Main Street, which I'm located right now, he'll have that tagged, and every time he works on that address, he'll start accumulating time. Because again, people will try to utilize your, your vendors for free until it's not free when you submit a building permit, but we make sure that we keep track of all that time. So when you do submit a permit, you do have to pay for that time that's associated with that project. And again, you pay a zoning deposit, and if you go over that, then you have to pay for it. If you're under that, then you have to reimburse us for it. But some things that is not, are not covered, you know, are like, you know, some of the times that we just have to call them up for just a certain question, something arises that we just need to take care of, you know, that's where you see the overage, but for the amount of money that we're paying, especially for a entire company of people, rather than just having one person, I think is money, it's, 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 it's the best fiscally way to do it, is to have an entire vendor, like, you know, with the Gray Robinson or Wade Trimmer PDCS, because we don't have to fluctuate and worry about sick time or anything like that, and having it for $85,000 in the year is just the best way to do it. But again, their services were the only thing that was overrun. Public Works, this is where it gets tricky, because people see it, and they're like, oh my gosh, you're like way over budget. But the reason for that is because of the additional costs that were associated with the town facilities, and it shows reflective in their budget as far as expenditure, but it's covered by, again, the new town facilities bond payment. So it, when you build a house, you're not paying for the entire house right off the bat, you're paying it through your draws through your loan, but we have to show it as an expenditure. So the total hit is only 327, but when you look down here, it shows a huge hit of, I think it was over $1 million. 1.266 million dollars. So the only hit we're paying for this fiscal year is really the 368, everything else draws out of that, that original loan. Now, for Public Works, again, there was a lot of issues that we had to resolve, and that's really not to blame for anything, but there was some miscoding issues, but the major items are either corrected or being corrected, and they'll be corrected prior to the audit. But lawn maintenance, that included $7,000 for a new facility landscape. That's again, one of those anomalies that we will not include for next fiscal year. Also included the abandonment of the 1887 schoolhouse well. So we had a cap that well, portion of it was paid for by HPP, and the balance of that was paid for by Public Works, again, something that we're not going to have to deal with next year. General Engineering Services, for Kimmel Home Associates, what they do is we have a miscellaneous IPO from them, and that covers them for our monthly projects meetings, or if issues come up that we have to talk about and resolve that aren't part of an IPO, that's where that money comes out of, and that should be split 50 50 between stormwater and general fund. So we'll be doing that from here on out, and we probably will recover some money into this expenditure this fiscal year, because I think Nora just finished that today. And also with John Fitzgibbon, they were two draws that came out of general engineering services that we are going to need to code and correct at the end of the fiscal year. Janitorial Services, that was over budget again for the overlap of the facilities and doing the deep cleanings. Town Hall Decorations, that was over by 4,000, because we talked to our public work staff, and we just don't have the time or the resources to really have them do it, because if we're having them put up lights, they're not able to grade roads, they're not able to do all the other stuff that we do on an annual basis, so we will have to increase that budget to about 5,000 for next fiscal year. And if some people aren't happy with the vendor that we chose, so we'll make sure that we find a vendor that we're going to be happy with, and that will give us a product that we're going to enjoy in November. Computer maintenance, again, it's not showing a hit for them, because it's all in admin. Miscellaneous repaving, that's going to be over budget again, you know, one of the best things that we've done or been able to do this fiscal year was, again, with the hiring of Tanya, was that we're able to utilize a lot of the projects and we're able to get $2019, and that's going to be from Middlesex. So we had all the six hour, Sixth Avenue for repaving was, and Lake Butler Boulevard was at 2019 pricing for $407,000. Then, as part of that overall project, we're able to tack on the paving of the Winnebago softball parking area, adding ADA accessibility and a nice little drop-off area in that location with the same amount of dollars at the same time. So again, we're, we took advantage of a great, a great price in order to get a lot of these projects done. The downfall is that you're, you know, going to be over budget in that certain line item, but, you know, you're getting a lot of bang for the buck. Gas, again, we're seeing an increase in gas prices, or you see that increase in Public Works and police miscellaneous expenses, you know, there was increases new to the new Public Works facility as far as items purchased that they didn't anticipate as far as cabinets, tables, stuff like that. And then the road CIP, we've got the 2019 pricing and capital improvements, we're over because of the park camera systems. So when we go to Parks and Rec, you'll see some money out of the budget in that area too, so it's a matter of coding it all back to Parks and Recreation for capital improvements, because that's where it should be in that total cost. So Public Works, when you look at the total budget, if you were to take it, and what we budgeted was, you know, 2.945, and if you minus the ARPA funding out of that, which I think we planned for about 750,000 or maybe 800,000, the total expenditures came to 3.7 million. But again, if you take those two offsets out, you know, their total expenditures for the fiscal year would have been 2,263,002, which is equivalent to being over budget by $68,000. And that is really good compared to all the projects that we were able to get funded this year, and all the additional items that were just added on without having a budget for it. And when you'll see, and when we get through the expenditures, we're well into reserves that we're able to do these projects and not have a fear of, you know, are we going to be too over budget to where we're going to have to increase, you know, the mileage rate, are we going to have to, you know, borrow additional monies? We're never going to be in that position, because we have a health reserve that we have been building up since 2011. Police Department, again, I can go through all these numbers, and you guys, it's on the agenda packet. If you have any additional questions, either, you know, have them tonight, or if you have them next week, feel free to give me a call, we'll sit down and go through them. This doesn't only include the, the town council members and the mayor that are on tonight, but all the members of the public as well. Staffing changes, again, with the onboarding, we have Staffing changes, again, with the onboarding, we have John Allen leaving, Detective Allen. Deputy Chief is going to be leaving, and we have two officers that are leaving as well. So we need to have four additional psych tests, testing, regular testing, physical, so you see an increase in that. And we also remember we purchased in full Vehicle Forty-Seven. Emergency equipment is going to be overdue to Blue Line purchase, and that's the emergency indicators that go through all of the Town Hall. It comes through Town Admin and PD. So if you hit a panic button, then everybody immediately is alerted to go on lockdown. We all understand, you know, the the significance of that, especially with Town Admin being attached to a police department. The D C Memorial is over, because again, they moved their Police Memorial to October, and then we had two additional ones in May. So that's why that's over. And again, salaries are over, because the reserve salary and the Cross and Guard salary were all included, just the overall salaries. So that's why it's a little bit over or under, if I went back up there and take a look at it. Now, I did get a question earlier on, why was FICA over? Again, we anticipate FICA just based on your overall salaries. And it's hard to to figure out how much, you know, overtime you're going to do in that FICA, you know, Medicaid, anything else on that. So that's why that was increased or going to be over budgeted because of either people paying out for their vacation time, you know, with retirements and or off-duty. So that's why the FICA is over a little bit. But we can correct that a little bit for next fiscal year. Code Enforcement Wonder, because we haven't had as many code enforcement hearings that we anticipated. Again, Parks and Recreation, we have the additional camera costs. The tennis court resourcing wasn't planned for this fiscal year, but we were able to do it anyway. They installed a walkway from the Pavilion to the tennis courts. They replaced the wind screens at the tennis courts and rekeying the park amenities. So in summary, the revenues are coming in. We're going to be over what we anticipated, but it comes to about six-point-seven-seven-eight million dollars. With the anticipated expenditures minus the new facility, which we talked about at Public Works, we're looking at an overall cost estimate of about six-point-eight-seven-one million dollars. And that's with conservative estimates of revenue and increased cost expenditures. The town should be at or slightly over the adopted budget by the end of the fiscal year. You know, we added all these unanticipated costs for this fiscal year. So we could be at around over budget by ninety-three thousand to one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which represents less than two percent of your overall budget. You know, staff continues to submit reimbursements related to grants awarded. That's the HNGP grants, also the ARPA funding. And those haven't been accounted for thus far. Board and Committee revenues and expenditures, they will be recorded at the end of fiscal year. But the estimate that we provided them, I think I put it way too generous as far as what they're going to be spending for this fiscal year. So this overage will hopefully be reduced by the time we present you with a a new budget and go through the budget hearings in September. So any additional projects that will need to be funded, over and above what we already talked about, let's say, you know, we get a great price again, in two months to get a project accelerated, or we're able to get a grant to leverage some funds. Right now, we have a healthy reserve of one-point-nine million dollars. That's about twenty-eight percent of your overall general operating funds. So the healthy reserves is doing twenty and twenty-four percent. I think our audit, they kind of recommend about the sweet spot of about twenty-two percent. So we're over that right now. But again, we're unlike any other community, because we have those charter restrictions to where we're not able to do projects. We can't take loans for projects over a certain amount. We'd have to put it to a referendum. So if we had to do a project on Second Avenue, we would have to put it out to all the voters. And if I'm on Magnolia or Oakdale or anything like that, you know, some people would say, well, why am I going to approve this? I need to get some improvements over here. So that's why we create a CIP and we save money for those projects, so we can fund those in-house, not getting additional loans. And as indicated, we had several unfunded items this fiscal year with an understanding of Fernwood improvements, additional paving, camera systems, park improvements, all those things, and the possibility of what we're going to be talking about tonight relative to Oakdale and the southeast quadrant of the town. So does anybody have any questions over the summary? Or where we're going to be at by the end of this fiscal year before I start moving into what we're looking forward to for next fiscal year? And sorry, I'm talking fast. I'm just trying to make sure that you guys get the information. The information's out there. And I'm happy to answer any questions. But I know a lot of people are on specifically for the Oakdale issue. And I would say this, you know, to those people that are on today, tonight. Our budget workshops are where you really see how the sausage is made. Because you see where the money's going, you see where we're, you know, putting money away for and which projects we're looking to fund next fiscal year. Typically, we don't have people show up to those. And also with the budget hearings, sometimes they last like, I would say, less than three or four minutes, because nobody's there to, you know, provide their input. So those are the times you need to provide your input, if you want to see something or a project get funded that you've been waiting for or been advocating for, either as a community or as an individual. So those are the times that you really need to get engaged. But at this time, I'll open it up to any of the council members that have any questions relative to the summary of this fiscal year before I get into what we can look forward to next fiscal year. And Mayor, if you're on, you can give me guidance if I'm going to move on or?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I had to go the phone route. So apologies, everyone. Thank you, Robert, for the presentation. Council, any questions? Robert, did we, for the deep cleaning, did we use ARPA funds or COVID funds for that?
No, we were holding those back for, we use COVID funds for the thermometers and the aerated devices that is a portable one that we can use for, let's say, an individual gets COVID and we want to go ahead and spray down their office, we can do that. Kind of like a fog machine. And the same thing with the police cars. So we do have one unit that we can utilize and or we have an ability to borrow an additional unit from a COE or another jurisdiction in case we have an incident where we have to do a mask cleaning.
Okay.
But we did use COVID dollars for that. And I think that was reflected in last fiscal year.
All right. Thank you, sir. I've moved forward then if I I didn't see any, I can't see any hands up or from council. So I believe we can move forward.
All right. Thank you. I do want to thank Nora and everybody, all the staff, because again, they understand the the environment we're in. So they look for the best prices, the most bang for the buck, and they're very conscious of the budget. What I always explain to them is they're going to ask for something, it says if they're taking it out of my own wallet. So they better have a great justification for that cost. So the draft budget, I've pretty much done for next fiscal year, again, using conservative estimates of revenue and looking at the inflation and the cost of construction for next fiscal year. But I'm optimistic, we're going to be able to fund all these projects. Some of these are already within the funding category, which is waiting for designs to be approved. But without any mileage increase or any assessment increase, what we're looking at for next fiscal year fiscal year is again, getting the Butler Basin Stormwater and Private or Putable Water System installed. The Bessie Basin Stormwater and Putable Water System installed, West Second Avenue Stormwater and Putable Water System installed. Installed older main being paved, that would be from West Second Avenue all the way to the canal and adding putable water, the Phase One of the multimodal project, which includes the bridge and the multimodal path that would be constructed. The Rotary Pavilion slash Healthy West Orange Pavilion would be constructed next fiscal year. What we're trying to do is work with Orange County on funding or trying to find a grant to fund fifty percent of the just like we do with water, we need a water master plan, a a story to tell, you know, federal, state, and local legislators that, hey, this is why we need the money to fund a wastewater system in town. And that total cost, just for the report, is about three-hundred thousand dollars. Then we get into the millions when it gets into initial design. And then up to forty million dollars for implementation of that design. Those are just on today's costs. So my plan is if we can't get the county to fund it, if we can't get additional entities to pay for that, then I'm going to be budgeting one-fifty for next fiscal year to pay for at least fifty percent of that. And that gets us to October of two thousand and twenty-three. And then I'll be able to fund the other fifty percent if approved by Town Council, and then we're able to do RFQ in October first of two thousand and twenty-three. So next year, October, we can fully fund an RFQ and start the design of a wastewater system. Same thing with the Stormwater Master Plan. If I can't for this fiscal year, we're definitely in for it for next fiscal year. And what I'll do is enable us to create a a new CIP, Capital Improvements Program, so people know we're not just doing a little fix here, a little fix there. But they'll see on an actual list, you know, when we're going to be going towards that project based on the funding that we have or the availability of funds. Now, that can change like anything. It's not set in stone, because if you get an HNGP grant or some other federal earmark to pay for that, it could bump up one project over another. And also, we're going to be working on our pavement management plans, so probably RFQ that out there or RFP it out in September and then award it in October. And then these are just some of the designs that we've been vetting and discussing. Again, you have Bessie here. And these are both Bessie, and then this is Butler. And you can see West Second Avenue improvements, so the entire street is going to be looking like this. Our Phase One of our master plan for the trail system. Again, you can see how we have enhanced vegetation, then we have the multimodal path, and then we'll have a swell system in order for us to collect more stormwater. So it's not just sitting there for days like you see north of the canal and on the east side of Main Street, again, over here too. And then you can see again renderings of what the trail system is going to look like, which is the entire length of the old railroad right away. And then the Bowstring Bridge, which we'll be having another public hearing coming up soon on the bridge for the pedestrian canal. And this is just rendering of the Winnebago Pavilion. And I see that Molly has her hand up for a question.
Yeah, I should have asked you before, what is the wastewater report? Is that sewer?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, again, in order for us to go to, or you don't want to go to a lobbyist and pay for a pay-for lobbyist without a story or some hard data. You know, we have general estimates of how much it's going to cost and where we need to connect to, of where the capacity is going to be. But we don't have a report that I can hand somebody and say, listen, here's our story, here's our needs, and here's why we need it. You know, typically, they think Winnebago has all this money. You know, we're not able to get CDG grants, but there's some environmental impacts that we need to take a look at. But they want to see that story, and they want to see that you're, you know, you've vetted it, you've invested in it, just like we do with the Water Master Plan, so we can get the lobbyists and help us get access to those legislators and show them that 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 vision that we have and the actual costs. And then hopefully, we're going to be able to do that in two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Because again, remember your Main Street loan that you took out in two thousand and four, that that note is done in two thousand and twenty-four. So you can recoup about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars that you can use for other projects at that time. And depending upon what happens with the one-step sales tax, that can be an additional three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars that you put towards road improvement projects, including dirt roads.
I thought, I thought we were paying the admin Police Department building off with what was falling off of the the two thousand and four.
We could to accelerate that.
Okay, I thought that was always the plan. Okay, sorry.
It's not. It's just, no, people were asking, are you going to be over budget? Are you going to, do you have alarm increases? And no, we can weather the storm for two years in order for that not to be an issue.
Right. Okay.
So yeah, the the statement was not to include or not to add ad warn taxes or increase it just because of the new town facilities.
Right. No, I'm all for sewers. I've been fighting for them for years. Good. Thank you.
Yes. So, thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing Mayor, if you'd like me to move forward with.
Yeah, yeah. We cut through and and and, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, the way that I would recommend doing this is let me do the presentation and maybe that I answer some questions from some of the residents and then get into the LRP recommendation that was provided to us last week. So let me try to pull up the presentation real quick. Okay, so the presentation that we provide to you tonight is the same presentation that I provided to to public input meetings that we did virtually and the long-range planning meeting that we did as well. So it's been three publicly-held meetings. The first one, we noticed everybody that was within pretty much on Oakdale Street, coming from Sixth Avenue all the way down to Twelfth. And then the second one, we notified everybody to door knockers within five hundred feet of Oakdale. Now, there's some people that weren't involved in some of these discussions, because we didn't know how it was going to evolve. So if and when we look at a recommendation from Town Council, whatever direction we want to go to, we will try to get it out there as much as possible to try to inform people of any and all changes that may be occurring. But this was a resident-generated issue that has been going on since I've been here again. We initially studied this, I believe, in two thousand and fourteen. But we've subsequently done our own studies to try to justify the data, if in any changes that were going to be made. Again, the data may not show what people see on a day-to-day basis. So what we present tonight is just the data that is collected. But again, when you hear from the residents, you know, they see things differently as far as speeding, as far as the amount of traffic and safety concerns. And we're very sympathetic to that, and we listen to everybody's ideas. And I believe that a lot of the residents that were engaged in these discussions came up with solutions, just didn't use it as an eventing platform, which I really appreciate. So here's the area that we're looking at, again, Sixth Avenue to the north, Main Streets to the west, and then I would say Twelfth and Chase to the south. So this is the area that we're looking at as far as the cut-through traffic. And what we do is we put the strips down that people run over. And we did this as most recently as is my is my screen not showing?
You're showing the Pavilion picture.
Oh, yeah. That's not good.
Are you frozen?
No, let me just go ahead and do a new share. Can you see now?
Yes, much better.
You think I'd be better at this after how many of these things have we done? So I have to up everything else too. So the most recent study that we did was in January and February of two thousand and twenty-two. And people may ask, why do you do it in January and February? You want to do it during the winter months? Because that's when the most people are here and the most traffic is generated. You have the snowbirds that are coming down, schools in in session. So that's when you typically see the increase in traffic. And when we talk about cut-through traffic, it's not origin destination as far as, you know, we all know that all the traffic that's coming through town is coming from Horizon's West and going east in the morning, and then coming from the east and going to the southwest in the afternoon. But what we're talking about today is cut-through on the ancillary roadways that is not Main Street or Sixth Avenue. They're using the cut-through of, you know, Oakdale, Magnolia, all the other streets in order to avoid the traffic congestion that they see on Sixth Avenue or that they see on Main Street. But what we did was we put the stakes out there to see what, you know, what the data would show when we did it. And, you know, we had people complaining of speeding, and then the amount of traffic has increased and so forth. But what the data showed was that eighty-nine percent of the people were in the norm, meaning that they were within five miles over the speed limit. Now, you say, okay, well, five miles over, you know, the speed limit of fifteen is way too fast anyway. But you cannot write a ticket for anybody going over five miles over the speed limit. You know, if it's five miles plus, then yes, you can. And that's officer discretion. I mean, if they're going to give a ticket or if they're just going to give a warning. But you cannot give a ticket for anything that is less than five miles or the speed limit. I think there's a variation between, you know, is it take a tuning fork and go through a radar, radar certification? That's kind of like the 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 area, you know, uncertainty of making sure that, you know, you can or cannot do that. But you cannot give a ticket for anything less than five miles an hour. The total count for the thirty-four days that are out there was eight thousand eighty-five. And the average per day and average daily trips per that day or a day was about two-hundred-and-thirty. Seventy-seven percent were during the week. We know that, you know, majority of time is going to be during the week with twenty-three percent being on the weekends. They had ten anomalies, meaning either the strips would break apart or two cars would pass at the same time. So average daily trips per day, based on this January through February thirty-four days study, shows that the peak time that you would see for cars is about twenty-one cars per hour. And you can see this in the PM and you see the AM as well. So these are the times that Oakdale saw the most traffic. And again, when I say twenty-one cars, that's twenty-one cars per that hour timeframe. As far as average daily trips per day of the week, Friday is the most popular day. With the weekend, again, you see a significant drop-off. And as far as speeds, as we said before, you saw the eighty-nine percent all over within that five mile an hour zone and only a eleven percent. zone and only a 11% being over that zone. So from those 34 days, as you can see, this vehicle speeds are within the 85th percentile. I'll explain why that's important as far as 85th percentile range continuously and more recently even higher at 89%, which is excellent from a data standpoint. Occasionally, we would have some anomalies with super high speeds, which indicates either two opposing vehicle strikes of the device at the same time per the factory instructions. On one occasion, the countersheet actually pulled apart and they couldn't get an accurate count for the speeds. But we did receive an overall number. The recent data showing 34 days is as long as that we've ever done. So why is this magic number of 85th percentile? That's an engineering standard that is utilized to make sure, you know, if you're making any amendments to anything that it is justified through an engineering study. They need those engineering studies in order to enforce like traffic signs, you know, speed signs, so on and so forth. So it has to be warranted and they use this 85th percentile as that warrant for you to make improvements. So the speed, the 85th percentile speed is the speed at or below which 85% of the drivers will operate on open roads and favorable conditions. The assumption underlying the 85th percentile speed is that most drivers will operate their vehicle at speeds that they perceive to be safe. Speed limit set above or below the 85th percentile speed will create an unsafe condition due to the speed differentials. As some drivers adhere strictly to the law, while other drivers naturally are induced speeders. You know, you're going to have people that obey the law and people that don't obey the law. And traffic engineers, you the 85th percentile speed as a standard to set the speed limit as a safe speed, minimizing crashes and promoting uniform traffic flow along a corridor. So what influences speed, the 85th percentile, again, is going to be lane and shoulder configurations, presence of vertical and horizontal curves, sight distance and obstructions, presence of surrounding developments to the street and access management. So again, all these things relate to speed and not to just the traffic and cut through. So I want to make sure that everybody's understanding that that differential. So again, all the speeds that we see, you know, I I've listened to everybody from the, you know, since 2014 to 2017, 18, 19, and so on. So you know, we understand that, you know, you're going to see speeders and you see those anomalies. But, you know, we have the data standpoint and then you have the perceived standpoint, which are the people that live it every single day. And that's why we have these meetings to get that public input, because even if the data shows one thing, there still may be an issue that we need to resolve. So the last one we did before the January one was in 2021. Again, this is May. It was done for five days with an average daily trust of 224 per day with 85% being within the norm. Oakdale and eighth on April 2021. Again, the total count was 946. This was 158 per day, but again, there's only one tube that was out there, so they couldn't get any accurate speeds. Oakdale and eighth, 1025, 19, 1031, 19. This is done for six days. Eighty eight percent were within the norm as far as speeding with a total count of 1420 with an average daily trip of 237. Then again, on Oakdale and eighth, sorry, skipped up. In 2017, we did it for four days and it had 138 per day. But again, it was just one strip wasn't two strips. So we're only getting one strip going out, not cars coming in and coming out. And then the other one we did was all the way down in 10th, where we saw again 367 vehicles. But as far as speeding, everybody was within in that 85 to 89% percent home. And here again, you can see the average daily trips. Some people say, okay, well, traffic has totally increased over the last couple of years, but what the data has shown is that is not necessarily true. The 137 shows that we only had one counter out there and not two counters. So it's just getting one way traffic. So if you double this, it'd actually be at around what we see as the norm from average daily trip on Oakdale Street in those locations. So the trips per day really hasn't increased. And some of the changes that we've made since 2014 and 2017 and 2018, as we created the no cut through signage during certain peak hour times, we really, you know, it was hard to gauge if that's been a positive or a negative, because again, we had the pandemic and it seemed to not, you know, during this few times not have an impact. But again, it's an enforcement issue that we heard from a lot of residents and our officers can't be out there most of the time. But again, we do believe that some of this has curtailed some of the cut through traffic in some of the areas. But again, when you it's whack a mole. When you plug up one hole, it's going to open up another one. So we understand that some of the signage is not correcting 100% of the the issues that you guys see day in, day out. And then when we did the 2018 study with Kim Lee Warren Associates, it did show that there wasn't justification to do any changes because they didn't see that much as cut through. And people always ask about, you know, well, you know, what's an average daily trip per day? Per engineering standards, 10 trips per household per day. That means that you leave and come back. That's two trips. So if you, interestingly, if any other have to go to work, you leave, come back, you know, that's four trips. You go to the grocery store, come back, then now you have six trips. So you can see how incrementally increases. Same thing with you're going to take your kids to school or if you're going to grocery shopping to a restaurant, go to the theater, those all add to your average daily trips. And that's typically why you see, you know, in some areas, an increase on Fridays and stuff like that. But again, when you look at how many homes are south of six in that quadrant that we're looking at on Oakdale, there's about 50 homes. So even if you cut those average daily trips to five, which is, you know, you going to work and coming home from work and then a significant other going to work or dropping off the kids, you know, even if you cut that in half, that's 250 trips per day, which falls within the counts that we've had in our data standpoints. But things that we can discuss and have been discussed at the last previous meetings were, okay, well, how do we relieve some of the traffic congestion that we have? Because the less time that people are going to be on Main Street and six is the less incentive for them to use the other roads as a cut through. And again, it's a philosophical standpoint that you have to have. Either you want to get them in or get them out or make it as difficult as possible for them to get through town, which again, does make it harder for your residents to get in and out of town as well. The traffic's here, it's going to stay. And the philosophy that we've kind of had from a staff standpoint is to try to get them in and get them out. Because there's no parallel reliever that we're we see in sight. And what that would entail, if the one cent sales tax were to be approved is to increase the flow at the Sixth Avenue roundabout. And then once that is completed, then you can go ahead and do the other relievers at Chase and Main and then Winemere Road and Main and eliminate those stop signs, put roundabouts there. Because the more that you have a flow of traffic, the less you're going to have the metering, because right now you stop and you go, stop, go. And so the cars are metered as they go down Main Street. But when you have a roundabout, then the cars are going to be more together and then the gaps are going to be larger. So you're able to take a left or take a right onto Sixth and or Main Street. The other thing that was considered at a lot of the other meetings was to add other traffic control devices, whether it be stop signs, speed bumps. And we've taken a look at that and also working with surrounding jurisdictions. But at the meetings that we discussed with the first public meeting, the second public meeting and L R P, you know, the final recommendation, again, we discussed putting pockets as far as a pocket park here and there or putting barricades that we've discussed in the past, again, the stop sign issue. But what we heard from, you know, the residents and from L R P was let's just cut off the access points to Sixth Avenue and restrict the the cut through right away. I'm sorry, I'm going fast on this, but I want to show you the map that originally showed. So, you know, again, we have the no cut throughs during the peak times. But again, people are, you know, cutting through on other roadways and then going up Oakdale, going up Magnolia, Bessie Street, and then over here on Seventh in order to gain access to Sixth. You know, originally from the first meeting to the second meeting, they were like, okay, let's just shut down Oakdale right here and then shut down 12th over here. And then it's going to force them again with those no right turns and those at peak times to get them closer. But again, if you don't shut it down, you're still going to have to enforce it. And again, you're going to need officers out there and standing by all the time in order to catch those that are using it as cut through during those peak times. So the recommendation that ultimately came out of not only both of the public meetings, but also L R P was to go ahead and block off access on Oakdale, Magnolia, Bessie and Seven. So you would not have access to Sixth all the way along this roadway. And some of the things that we discussed at the L R P was, okay, well, how would this look like and how would it be implemented? And when we discussed the staff, you don't want to be pot committed to where if you have an idea and it doesn't work, you're, there's no way to go back. If you spent so much money and invested so much money on this, you don't want that to occur. So in order not to be pot committed, what we would do is put in split rail fencing at these locations. Now, we've already received some quotes and we're able to do this probably less than $15,000. And if you add additional signage, maybe another $5,000, so the whole thing would be about $20,000 of investment for a a test to see if it works. And we would have breaks in that split rail fence for pedestrians to cross at certain locations if they want to. We'll have golf car access as far as the holes in the fence now. You know, they still need to cross over onto the other areas, access safer places to get on to where they're going to. But, you know, it would be a split rail fence. And then what we can do as well is after this is installed, because right now if we were to approve it and then it would come in June, you know, then we implement it in July, you're not going to see, after you have 30 days, if you implement this type of maneuver, you want to get people plenty of notice that, you know, their traffic changes are going to change and their daily routine is going to change for a period of about 30 days. And then once those 30 days are up, then we go ahead and put those split rail fences in place, then the traffic pattern changes, then you'll start seeing the cut through traffic and seeing how it works. But we would, once it's implemented, which we're hoping possibly in August, then you have August, September, October, November, maybe do a three month period, get some counts, get some public input. Is this working? Is this not working? And also do another review after six months. Again, getting public engagement. Is this working, not working? And again, if it ultimately is not working, again, you're not pot committed. You're, you can take the split rail fence, we could probably put it somewhere else. And there wouldn't be an issue to where if you put a wall or some other sort of cul-de-sac or a barricade. Another concern that people had was, okay, well, if you do the closing off of these roadways, you know, my mail is going to be disrupted, my saw waste is going to be disrupted, emergency services is going to be disrupted as well. And we would work with those various, you know, we work with Waste Pro, we work with the mail carriers on changing their routes. And if emergency vehicles need to get to you, they will get to you. Again, this will be split rail fences. So if there is a traffic accident or some traffic needs to be diverted, whether it's a hurricane or something else, we can remove those split rail fences pretty quickly. So again, it's not like it's concrete ballers or walls or anything like that. We're able to take those down pretty quickly like we do over by the town square from when we have certain events. So again, this would be a trial run for three to six months. And then if that is something that is successful, maybe we can look at ideas and work with L R P and with the community on what can possibly be a permanent fix for that area. And then, again, they were looking at 12th and Chase on blocking that as well, which I know there's some additional concerns. But again, you know, that was the recommendation from L R P was to close off these roadways up here and then also at 12th and Chase. You know, some of the comments that we have received was, you know, it's hard to take a left or right, getting on to Main Street enough. So so a lot of people utilize 12th and their stop sign to be able to get that access to the roadway. So this one town council would consider that. That's basically the presentation that I have. Again, we had two public meetings with those in that southeast quadrant. And that only included people within 500 feet of Oakdale. So the people over here were not included in this door knockers, but we did advertise this on social media on our app. And we can only use so much on informing people of what's going to happen. But the ultimate recommendation of L R P and the public that we heard from was to close down these streets in the northeast or the southeast quadrant. And I may talk about, okay, we should do the same thing in the northeast quadrant, but we haven't done the same public input and vetting as we've done in the southeast quadrant. So I wouldn't advise council at this time to close down those streets because I want to make sure that we engage the public as we did with the southeast quadrant. And with that, I'll turn over to the mayor and we did receive two public comments.
Thank you, Robert. Are those written public comment or do we have individuals who would like to make public comment on on the on the Zoom?
I have the two public comments that were submitted via email and text. And I have Brandy Haynes, who would like to speak on the point as well. We did receive previous public comment, but that was specifically related to the L R P meeting that we can also forward to town council. They do all recognize issues in that area as far as cut through. And it was mostly focused on, okay, well, if you block Oakdale, then it's just going to put a Band-Aid and create more issues on Magnolia. It really didn't get into the blocking of all the roadways along Sixth Avenue. But at the L R P meeting, the reaction of the residents that were on that meeting was very positive as to those closing. And that was the ultimate recommendation from that committee. But the first one I have is from David and Lori Hinshaw. We own 825 Oakdale Street. We bought on this beautiful sand street because it's because of its quiet nature. We are in support of closing it to through traffic to make it safe again for all of us, especially our kids. And then the one that I believe were was copied to a lot of you is from Bill and Nancy Bardell at 225 East Ninth Avenue. Support the proposed L R P to close the five intersections along Sixth and Oakdale and 12th, allowing for adjustments if needed. And with that said, I can turn over to the mayor and staff is ready and able to answer any questions.
Thank you, Robert. I know that Brandy wanted to speak. Could we go ahead and let Brandy offer her public comment at this point?
Ah, yeah, Brandy Haynes, 835 Oakdale Street. I I did, you guys will be getting some more emails. I actually did speak to four people on Magnolia Street this past week as well as one on, I guess it's technically Seventh Street because they're kind of on the corner there. And then I've talked to a few people also on Bessie Street. I think some of them might be on here tonight. But anyways, everyone that I've talked to so far is is in support of it. So I know you're going to be getting more emails, but I did let them know that they, you know, had a window to do that really up until you guys do the vote in June, but said the sooner the better. Of course, we're in support of it. You know, we just want to see it closed off and the fact that, you know, there's the option that if people really hate it, that it can be switched back easily. I think that's, you know, was a concern of some of the people that I talked to. So just want to say I'm glad we're finally getting to see things moving along and I want to thank everyone for all the work on this because I know it's been a long road. And it's nice to see us actually getting some progress. So thank you for the presentation, Robert.
Sorry, I spoke so fast. It's just trying to get as much information out there as possible so the council can make an informed decision. Again, this is a workshop, so no final decisions are going to be made. The final decision will be made at a formal town council meeting in person.
Thank you, Brandy, for all your comment and and the long road joke. I like that. That's good. So since I'm working off the phone tonight, Robert, I'll ask your assistance in looking for raised hands from county, because I may or may not see those. At this point, though, I am very interested in hearing council input. I will share a few things. Certainly, I do agree with most of the the input and there has been extensive input on this. I've gotten several probably 10 or 12 emails in terms of all in support thus far. Council, if if you have had any negative feedback, I I know we want to be interested and hear that as well.
We do have one public member that wishes to speak that has their hand raised. And then after that, we can close it or if you want to close it now, it's up to you, but there's only one.
No, I'm more than fine hearing from hearing from our neighbors. So what what we'll do at this point is we'll we'll hear this comment. And then if there's any additional comment after we discuss it as council, we can open this up towards the end of the meeting as well.
Okay, Melissa?
Sure, just a quick comment that my husband and I, we, our family, we live here at 419 East Seventh Avenue. And just to say that we are in support of this measure and that I I reiterate what Robert had said, that this is a residence initiated effort as opposed to a staff initiated effort and we appreciate your support. effort as opposed to a staff initiated effort. And um, we appreciate your support and all of the consideration thus far. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. At this time there, I'm going to go ahead and uh close the chat. And the reason for that is again, we don't want to create a avenue toward people are doing public comment, not being able to time that. Uh, but we can open it up at the end if you so choose.
Yeah, I that and we'll we'll leave it closed for now. Um, if anyone has any burning issues that they wish to discuss, we'll go ahead and open it up real quick uh at the end of the meeting as well to make sure we get everyone's public comment. Um, I think that uh certainly uh there's a lot of work. It was a good presentation. I know that the uh the numbers don't always tell the story. Uh, I am uh, I'm interested in uh discussing the ways that we can potentially do a test run on this. I am, I do share a little bit of the concern about the uh the dead end that this creates, not that that is the end of the world, but uh how we may uh look to mitigate that uh in terms of turnaround space for vehicles that may need that, especially, you know, like you said, mail. And and uh, you know, trash and oh, there's a lot of delivery trucks as well. So uh, you know, with Amazon and everybody using uh home drop off now. So what what I would like to avoid is having people reverse down those roads. Um, I think that that can create another uh negative side effect that I want to make sure we anticipate. So uh, yeah, I think uh th- those are my comments. Uh, council? At this point, we'd love to hear from you guys. And like I said, I can't exactly see you, so.
I got you, Mayor. Um, Manny David was the first council member. Manny David was the first one to raise their hand, then Molly Rose.
Mandy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my only question um is, and I think it's a great idea. I think it's fantastic. I think it um will definitely put some safety on the roads for little kids down those roads. But um, my question is the um crosswalk on Main that's right and I'm I'm bad with my street numbers, but right after, right around the new administration building. Um, I noticed that that crosswalk is not um like the other ones in town. And I think if we're directing a lot more traffic onto Main, I'm a little concerned for pedestrians walking back and forth to the library and just downtown and train across there. So would we be doing something to enhance that?
I I know that uh Winter Wyandine is funding additional um wags, we call them, the lights that stop traffic for people across. They typically see in other areas. Um, the next one I believe is at Estancia. I do believe their second ranked one and council member David can correct me on where that's going to be located. I believe it was um between ninth and tenth. And then the third one was over by Wintermere Recreation Center. Now we can accelerate any one of those and I can budget for it next fiscal year or can pay for it now. Um, if we're to make this, because again, this is another one of those non-funded items that were is going to be outside of our budget. But I'm still anticipating it to be not over twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to um create this type of um I would say blockade of dead ends, um, and then adding the signage. Um, and then, you know, each one of those wags is about sixteen thousand dollars for a crosswalk location. So it's nothing that's way too out of the realm of uh of cost feasibility.
Councilman David.
I was just going to say that Robert got those uh crosswalk priorities correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that long range planning, there were a lot of people that um were a lot more people from uh Oakdale and Magnolia were speaking at that time. And everybody was in um support of this. I know we tried to do it like years ago and people didn't want to do the drive around, but um with the increase in traffic that they are seeing, they are now all on board that we've heard from. And also I wanted to say that um on Dirt Main, when we closed off there at Chase, it took away ninety-nine percent of our dry um cut through traffic. So this does work. It's also used all through Orange County and other areas. I think it's definitely worth a try.
I agree. It's a it's a proven uh solution. I think the the secret to the sauce is how we uh how we execute it, what it looks like and and how we kind of prevent any any bottlenecks or or challenges. Um, you know, and I think that that can be potentially a work in progress in terms of uh where we start and where we finish, as long as we know and and have an idea where we're headed and and what we want the eventual um outcome to look like. Thank you, councilperson.
I had a customer David next and then Bill Martini.
Councilperson David.
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, I I just got an email from uh one of the constituents and and he brought up an idea. I want to, I want to see if it's been discussed and want to get Chief Ogden's uh input on it. His his idea was to have um opposing one ways on all of those streets where you have um one-way traffic um where you can't do the the uh cut through trap, the traffic along the entire length of the roadway. So you know, a portion of uh say Oakdale would be one way uh one direction. And then the opposite way would be the opposite one way. Um, I I just wanted to get Chief Ogden and you know, the rest of council's thoughts on that approach. And I'm not sure whether it's been discussed um in the long range planning meeting or not. So uh chief is, chief is on, I understand it's going to be a, you know, enforcement uh problem. But will that make it easier or or harder?
I think it make it a little more difficult. I I I think I've said multiple times, this is a traffic engineer and issue. At the end of the day, when you look at the the times and everything else, we get the same complaints or similar complaints all throughout the town. And you only have one or two officers on, it's hard to be at all these same locations because that's when the traffic times are at. So um I know this kind, this did come up one time in the past. I don't know if it was in one of these meetings or just, you know, just kind of an open meeting I had with some of the the um the residents there. I I do think that would be an enforcement nightmare, to be honest with you. And just like kind of the no turn signs and things like that, to me, it's like, you know, sticking your finger in one hole and all of a sudden they're popping out on three or four other locations there. So I think if we're going to do something, um, I think the most feasible thing is is to shut this all down. Um, and and from enforcement standard, that's just, that's pretty, pretty simple, to be honest with you.
Yeah, we, the the LRP, which actually morphed from the traffic uh committee uh did discuss that as one of the options uh a ways back when I think we were talking about this in twenty eighteen. We're talking about the barricades, one ways, um, no cut through signs. Uh, so I believe that was discussed at a previous meeting.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just uh, you know, got that email today and wanted to voice that uh that potential solution.
Thank you, councilperson David. I I I think we all did receive that email as well. I I tend to agree with chief. I I think that there's simple elegance uh in the solution, although, you know, there's never a perfect solution, but if this is that, you know, simple is the best uh methodology, especially when you're you're dealing with traffic enforcement. Councilperson Martini.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, I agree with uh with chief and your uh synopsis of the multiple one-way uh streets. I I think we would end up at this point anyway, even if if we tried that. I think we would uh, we would end up in a situation where we uh, the next step would be closing off access for all of those streets. So we might as well jump to the recipe, so to speak, for this one and uh see how it works. And uh, you know, we can always backtrack or we can maybe devise a better plan while this uh most uh preferable uh system is put in place. I I think uh I've been to all the meetings, I've been on all the meetings about the Oakdale um and uh the quadrant block offs. And I I do want to thank uh Brandy Haynes for spearheading the communications on this. She has really gone above and beyond to um to make sure all the residents are uh informed and, you know, um, you know, so that everybody is aware of what's going on, you know, whether they agree with it or not. So uh, one point I want to make about the speed, you know, the speed um, the people going five miles an hour over the speed limit. Um, in in this instance, we're talking about speed limit of fifteen miles an hour. And people going up to twenty miles an hour, you know, still within the legal limit. But keep in mind, that's thirty-three percent faster than they're supposed to be going. And it's a huge difference. You know, if it was a fifty mile an hour speed limit and they were going five miles an hour over, that's that's only ten percent faster. It's really not noticeable. But in in our area where it's fifteen miles an hour and they're going twenty, nineteen or twenty, you know, that's thirty-three percent faster than they should be going. So it's alarming. I mean, I see it on Ridgewood all the time. But speaking of Ridgewood, I just wanted to share some of the experience that we've got. I talked about this in the other meetings. We have the no right turn signs from four to seven. Uh, to cut down on our cut through traffic and it has worked. Uh, it really has worked. It has cut our our cut through traffic down by probably eighty percent. We used to have eighty to a hundred cars uh uh an afternoon, evening coming through there. And now we're down to about twenty or so, you know, people still ignore the signs and people still speed at, you know, ridiculous speeds, but for the most part, it has been uh a a game changer for us on Ridgewood. Um, you know, I s- I have to drive an extra four or five blocks to get to my house during that time period. And and quite honestly, it only takes two or three extra minutes. So I I know there's, there's been some hesitation from some folks that have to, are going to have to go down to Main Street in a double back. But the reality is the inconvenience uh of a few minutes is uh worth a hundred percent of the increase in safety and peace of mind and uh calm, you know, enjoyment of your property that the residents will have. It it may seem like an inconvenience now, but you get used to it. And honestly, it only adds a few extra minutes. And it really relieves a lot of your uh grief, you know, seeing people fly through your neighborhood. So that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have uh John Fisk given, who I believe is speaking on behalf of LRP tonight.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Um, John, we'll we'll have you speak in one second. I was just looking at this and and thinking through different scenarios. Um, and as we as we develop a potential permanent solution, if that's the, if that's the direction that council desires to go, um, after we test a temporary solution, we're also going to need to plan for a um a detour path. So if you have an accident on Main Street or if there's a road uh blockage due to a tree or something, we'll want to consider a way to to uh give us an alternate um route through there, even for something like as we pave and maintain those streets. So uh, we'll we'll probably need to to discuss that through. That may be something that uh staff develops and uh and and brings uh as we move forward in the process, if council decides that's the way to go.
Yeah, Mayor, yeah. And then that's why we're starting with the split rail. It's it's easy to remove in case there is that situation.
Um, yeah.
And you're not pot committed and you're also having the ability to remove that in a short notice in case there is an accident, if ca- in case there's a disaster of some sort. So I know that Molly Rose has her hand up again. And um, again, John Fisk given uh has his hand up too.
Okay, we'll do um, we'll do Molly, John, and then uh if Councilman Williams says any input.
Yeah, I forgot to talk about the twelfth street. Um, I have not received anybody saying that that was an issue, but you said that was, Robert, but we're not closing off um Main and and Chase, you know what I mean? So that if somebody wanted to come around to a stop sign, they could still go one more block and around. But it was really thought that twelfth should be included in this by long range planning.
I can see how people might still try to use it as a bit of a shortcut. Uh, yeah, I I do see the potential for that, although yeah, I hate to to close off too many, but I certainly see where you're coming from and where our LRP was coming from. Um, thanks, thank you, Chris. Um, John.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So um, one, thank you guys for just, you know, listening to the residents. And uh, I think for us on long range planning, we, that is the first time we ever heard like all these people come together to say, this is what we want to do to take back our neighborhood. So that was kind of cool. And um, so we as long range planning wanted to make sure that we answered the call. But in the same vein, Tanya and I and Robert and council have to figure out how do we answer that call through proper signage and proper um delivery of what you guys are about ready to vote on? And so Tanya and I have been talking this week, just want to let you know, we got, you know, we're looking at signage with no throughput to Sixth Avenue and a lot of the engineering science behind it to be able to pull this off. And you know, we're looking at level of service and all the other things. So we do have all that stuff evolved. We think that the road closures will be okay through the level of service. But we also want to make sure that we're answering the call that when we have all these people coming through town, that they're served and they know where they're going. So they're not going to all get tripped up on this thing. So anyways, just background information, Tanya and I are working on it with Robert. You guys make the decision and uh we'll uh implement.
Thank you, John. We appreciate uh your input and participation as well. Uh, councilperson Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I really don't have too much to add. Um, this is so familiar. We've been talking about this for years. When I first came on six years ago, we discussed this. I mean, we we've made full circle on the closing off and pocketing uh this quadrant because of the traffic. Um, I am interested to see what kind of signage we're going to need uh because of all the dead ends. Um, my only part of the concern is I don't want to end up with just signs every block, you know, and or we need to know that's what it's going to look like going in. Um, when we did the changes on Ridgewood, um, at the time, I didn't realize how many extra signs we were going to have to put on Ridgewood. Um, with the humps and and the one-way and all that good stuff. So that would be the only thing I'd really want to see. I've been in support of this idea forever. Um, but I'm glad to see that everybody has really come together on it.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate uh your input and support as well.
And Mayor, a lot of time to provide that signage outlay uh for you by June fourteenth.
Say it again, Robert. I apologize. I think I stepped on you.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, we'd be able to advise you with that layout of what the signage would look like by the June fourteenth town council meeting.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from council and the residents and staff tonight is that we need to um address signage, uh, a detour methodology uh and as well as a temporary closure strategy uh in notice. Uh, and then what we can do as we as we study the temporary method, we can then begin to look at um, you know, assuming that that everybody is continues to be positive on this, uh, and it and it gives us the desired result uh that we'll look at at how we want to do this long term. Um, there are, like I said, there's multiple other places. This is something that was done years ago uh for crime in certain neighborhoods as well. We saw some of this in Palm Beach County uh along Dixie Highway. It's that area renewed. So um, there's, there's a lot of very much uh ways this can be done now. And we can look at those images and and see uh, you know, how it's done with the right, you know, you know, I see a lot of humps and landscape and things like that to make it blend in and not look like uh, you know, we just closed it. But I agree with, you know, the temporary methodology. I think that the split rail fence, if if that is sufficient, might be a good way to go, like staff is suggesting. I don't uh, I think the last time we did talk about some closures, uh, we were going to use some temporary barricades, but I believe that the pricing on those was pretty similar to the pricing we're talking about for the for the split rail fence, right?
Yeah, and it was, I think it was just the uh the barricades and then utilizing those or the water barricades. Uh, so people just can't pick them up and move them. Um, but I believe that this is going to be the most aesthetically pleasing type of uh way to block the roadways. Um, and in future, if you know, this does work, then we could add improvements like uh possibly a sidewalk on the south of six, interconnecting with the additional sidewalks too.
Okay. Yeah, I think we definitely want to lay this out and and do it correctly. Uh, but I I believe and and council can advise me if I'm incorrect, but uh, what I'm hearing is that we're interested in hearing about signage, a detour uh as well as a a a price and maybe a couple of methods to close those areas off temporarily along with the timeframe. Uh, council, is that, is that the direction that I'm hearing?
Uh, Mayor, I see a thumbs up from Molly Rose. Uh, Mayor, I see a thumbs up from Molly Rose, thumbs up from Bill Martini.
As Mayor.
Andy Williams with a thumbs up. And I just need to scroll through and see Tony and Mandy, Mandy and Tony both with a thumbs up.
All right. Thank you.
Consent for staff to move forward with.
Is that adequate staff direction, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Is there any additional input from the public?
I'll open up the chat right now. Mr. Gatlin from LRP has raised his hand.
Mr. Gatlin, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'm you, Roger.
There. I just wanna thank you all from LRP too for working on this. And my only other takeaway would be, you know, we did, we did look at closing single roads and just, but it just pushes the problems of some other people on other other roads. So even if for some reason this got postponed or delayed, I think that there, the only solution is to close all these roads, not just one or two of them. So no matter, you know, in the future or whenever, there, the only other thing I mentioned, there is the possible problem down between Twelfth and Thirteenth. But I agree, that'd be where I live. But it'll probably increase some traffic there. But it's a, it's not an easy route for cutting through. I'm thinking that most people want want to divert to that way. And anyway, they can't get out on Sixth. So I think the sign just needs to clearly say, no access to Sixth Avenue.
Correct. And and what we can do is we can request that staff provides us with an option that includes Twelfth and an option that does not include Twelfth, and we can gather some additional information and put on that. I wanna make sure that we have a few options just in case. You know, I want, you know, it's just, it's a balance, right? We wanna be mindful of the of what everybody needs in terms of egress, but also conservative enough that we get the job done here.
Yeah, it's one, one thing, the, for the residents in that quadrant, if they can get out at Twelfth to go down Chase, that's a convenience. Otherwise, they've got to come out on Main and make a left-hand turn, which at certain times can be difficult. But the recommendation was to close that at Twelfth. That could be an option, just my own opinion of waiting and see. Because it doesn't, if if people can't get in. But the one thing people could do is start down Main, cut over to Oakdale on, say, Eighth or Ninth to zip down to the access adjacent main. So that's a rationale for closing that. To not give that option to bypass standing traffic on Main.
I agree. Thank, thank you, sir. And I think that for for those, there may be some of us who think that people won't do that, but then I see people go down all Dirt Main just for a few blocks as well. So again, I think unless council disagrees strongly, we'll we'll ask for, we'll ask for the option of 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 Twelfth as well.
I would agree with that, Mayor. I see people cutting through between the two traffic circles in front of Town Hall to to save a three-car, you know, three cars in front of them. So, yeah, I'm I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, it's it's amazing. It's another, this is another, this is another one of those solutions that could always be completely done with common courtesy and common sense, but we don't always get that option. So, all right. And certainly, this, this also provides the opportunity for members of the public to continue to provide your support and or questions or comments to staff. Staff will share that, of course, with all council members, where you can email all of us directly as well. You know, it it's always good to know what people are thinking out there. We do read everything. Even if we don't get the opportunity to reply and just say, thank you, we do get your input and we're we're able to to put that into our decision-making process, and that is much appreciated.
Mayor, we have two comments that were in the chat box, one from Nancy Nix in support of it. And then another one from Yeah, Brad Gavin, and they're in support of it as well. And any additional emails that we receive after this meeting and prior to a formal Town Council meeting, we'll make sure we provide that to you as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And I appreciate everybody's work on this, LRP, Brandy, council staff, the police department. I know, you know, these, these traffic counters don't move themselves. And the input, like I said, the input always makes it easier and better to to represent everybody. Council, any additional considerations that you'd like to add at this juncture? Robert, do you see any hands up?
No, sir.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate that. We'll, at this time, we'll close this item. And is there any additional comment from the public?
I don't see any, sir.
Thank you. We will do our mayor and council liaison reports. The big report, of course, is that due to a tremendous outpouring of support, effort and participation at the Orange County Mission Meeting on Tuesday, we were able to have the boat exclusion zone item approved unanimously. And we look forward to the implementation of that for for Bird Island. That was a, that was a big success. That was not a sure thing by any stretch of the imagination. And I think it just proves that it really matters when you have council staff and 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 all the residents show up prepared and logical and calm and with facts. And that, that was a big win and I appreciate that. Any additional comments for council liaison reports from council?
A member David has his hand up.
Councilperson David.
Yeah, it's not a liaison report, Mayor, but I just wanna remind everybody, the Rotary Club is sponsoring their Memorial Day program on Monday starting at noon. So come out and pay your respects to those that made the ultimate sacrifice for this nation.
Absolutely. You took the words right out of my mouth. We will be there. I believe we start at noon. Any additional items, council? We'll move to staff reports.
Yeah, Mayor, we, on Monday, I spoke at the Madison's Eagle Scout Awards. They don't have one, not two, not three, but four of their children earn the Eagle Scout badge through the Boy Scouts of America. So I was honored to be invited to speak at that event. We don't have any late meetings next week, but I know that we are scheduling some additional workshops for other related issues that council's already provided consent on, and I'll keep you apprised of those.
Okay. Chief Ogden.
I'll be very brief. I just wanna give an update. We are onboarding the the official Windermere Sea Cadets Program. So for many of our residents, maybe this is the first time hearing that, they're a group of youth that it is an amazing program I've been involved with for a couple of years. So if anybody is and has been in the military in the past or wants to be a part of it, we will have a group of youth of about, I think right now we're hosting almost twenty kids that will be meeting at the police department once a month. They will be available for awards and seminars and and things of that nature. They'll do, they have their own honor guard and things of that nature. So it's a great program. I think a great asset that we're gonna have in our town. Also, don't forget the Windermere Police Department Foundation is doing a our summer bash event, June twenty-fifth. That's four P M. to eight P M. Right in the middle of Town Hall. That's the one we do once a year. This is replacing our St. Patty's Day event because we got pushed back a little bit for that. So just come out, enjoy, have a good time. Bunch of bounce houses, food, all kinds of stuff for the kids. And it's just, just a time to hang out and have a good time. And the last thing for the council, so when we implement this phase, if you remember to send some candy and maybe flowers to Lori and Teresa when we, when we implement shutting down roads, they're the ones who will be taking the phone calls all day long. They're accustomed to doing that. But if you've never been on that end of the spectrum, if we have a significant delay in town or anything else, trust me, you do not wanna be somebody who is receiving phone calls in Town Hall or in the police department. So that that would be a good day to send them, a week to send them some flowers, and I'll make sure I do the same thing. And that's it.
There should be some, there should be some hazardous duty pay there, I believe.
Yeah, it'll, I'm sure I'll hear some stories.
Just them? Nothing for Robert? Just them?
Well, they're the ones gonna be answering the phones. Robert and I are gonna be saying, we're not in.
You're like, Lori, it's for you.
Yes, sir. That's it.
If if I had a nickel for every time someone from Keans Point or elsewhere called to complain and 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 wants some services from their mayor that is not their mayor, you know, we could turn this into a paying gig as well. So, yeah, I think we all, we all share that. That's a fun one. But, yeah, those guys do a great job. And I know they really hit whenever we close down the road or there's a traffic accident or detour. Yeah, and and folks are, folks are absolutely brutal too. I mean, they, they, they check their, they check their manners at the door. Town Clerk Bert Coulter, I saw you on the calls. Anything that you would like to add to this?
No, sir, I'm good.
Thank you very much for being here. Did I miss anyone?
Tanya, this Public Works Appreciation Month, I believe.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, that's okay. No worries. The chief kinda stole my thunder a little bit, but we did meet with Middlesex this week. We are gonna be starting the Lake Butler Boulevard Mill and Resurface, June sixth through June twelfth. It'll also include the Little League parking lot paving, as well as a repair job at Horizon Circle at the Windermere Reserve. So those three areas will get kicked off on June sixth, so we're excited about that. Secondly, you may see Condor Construction trucks going through town because they are going out and remeasuring our sidewalk repairs for the year as well. So we can get that underway between June and July of this year. So with all said and done, you know, Public Works is really excited to say we're gonna have a lot of the paving completed and a lot of the bad sidewalks repaired. So we're really, really happy about that. Like Robert said, it is National Public Works Week last week. I took the guys to lunch today to thank them for all the work that they do. Diane will be putting something out on social media, just congratulating those four guys because they do work very, very hard. Thank you. That's my, my report.
Absolutely. And special thanks to having Travis out. Travis was out Sunday morning after the big rains on this weekend. And I appreciate that because, you know, it it really makes a difference when the roads aren't all torn up after those big rains that always happen on the weekend for some reason. My other question is with with the paving, are we retaining the millings?
Yes, so that, so some of those retained millings are going to be used on the parking lot, which is something that was necessary for us as well. Secondly, they're giving us a couple of loads of those millings to retain. We're gonna use some of those over at Magnolia. John and I were talking about that because we've got some issues there with stormwater. So we're just, yes, the answer is yes. We're getting some.
Always. We wanna make sure that we we keep those as as we get them. So, all right. If there is nothing else for the good of the order, we will adjourn at seven forty-four P M. Appreciate everyone's input.